All right, thank you. Good morning, everybody. We are here for the weekly Wednesday Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. It's Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025. It's 9:00 AM and we're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And as always, we do the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have one motion to remove an item.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I will move that we remove Action Item Number Eight under the Board of Commissioners from the agenda.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion?
Just that this was an order to consider an order of appointing Stephen Fletcher, M.D., as Marion County's District Medical Examiner. I wasn't here for a management update yesterday, but I guess there was a discussion to get more information.
Yep, it'll be here, I think, next week. It's just a matter of the Board being able to review the contract.
Okay.
With no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, we have nobody signed up today currently for public comment, going once. There's several of you in the audience. Okay, we will move into our proclamation this week. Wendy and Katie, or just Katie? All right, to consider approval of a proclamation designated in the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, is National Public Health Week in Marion County. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katie Manina. I'm a program coordinator in the Public Health Division at Health and Human Services. I am here this morning to present on public health in Marion County and to request a proclamation be made for National Public Health Week, which will take place next week, April 7th to the 13th. I have a PowerPoint here with a lot of pictures and some information from our 100 years of public health in Marion County, but we have actually lots of information that I couldn't all fit in that, so can I bring this to you? It's a photo album.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, boy.
The American Public Health Association promotes National Public Health Week every April, and as this year is its 30th anniversary, we also wanted to highlight public health here in Marion County with the theme Rooted in History, Growing in Health. We have a rich history of promoting and protecting health that goes all the way back to 1925, and we're going to share some of that with you today. Public health in Marion County started with the Child Health Demonstration Project in 1925. This was funded by the Commonwealth Fund and went through 1929. The project relied on public health nurses, a dentist, and a health officer to provide immunizations, dental and physical exams, prenatal care, and education. The city of Salem and the county saw such a great benefit from the work that they decided to continue it on themselves. Since then, our location has changed from High Street to Franzen Street in 1956 to the center picture of 3180 Center Street in 1975. Most recently, about a year and a half ago, all of our public health programs united in one building, 3160 Center Street. Since our beginnings, we have provided maternal and child health services in the form of assessments, screening, guidance, and education. Our WIC and early childhood nursing teams carry this work on today by seeing families both in their offices as well as providing home visits. Environmental health efforts in Marion County started with one dairy and food inspector and one sanitary inspector. They enforce sanitation and hygiene standards, the same as our environmental health specialists do today. From a report done in 1948, we know that there were just under 1,600 inspections of places such as restaurants, water supplies, and trailer courts. In 2024, our environmental health team is now composed of seven registered environmental health specialists who conducted nearly 4,500 inspections of pools, restaurants, hotels, RV parks, and childcare facilities. Within public health, health education has maintained a large role. That same report from 1948 noted that pamphlets, radio, newspapers, bulletin boards, and even motion picture were useful methods of sharing information, which still holds true. At that time, there was just one health educator, that's that lower-left picture, whereas we now have health educators in our health promotion and prevention clinic and communicable disease teams. Schools have been an important part of health education since the start. From 1925 to 1959, there were health pageants where schools chose different topics to promote. They had health clubs that even held a health parade at one point that started at the fairgrounds and went all the way to downtown Salem. While we no longer hold health parades and pageants, our health educators still work closely with youth, both in classrooms and at community events, including ILEAD, which is a youth leadership summit that took place last month.
I think it's a disservice that we don't have health parades. We should get it done.
Yeah.
There's a Captain Cucumber picture in here that really needs to go viral.
Yeah, a lot of enthusiasm behind this mess.
Was I in the costume?
I don't, I mean, you may have been born at the time, but I don't know. It's a pretty old photo.
Reducing the prevalence of infectious diseases continues to be a focus of public health. Our communicable disease team investigates and tracks rates of disease while our clinic team provides immunizations and testing. Whereas testing for disease used to take place in schools, such as this picture of a Dtheria test from 1930, in more recent days, we're able to offer mobile testing with our van as well as in our public health clinic. Marion County Public Health continues to strive for optimal health, just as the first team did 100 years ago. Since then, we have grown into many programs and positions that still work together to protect Marion County residents from disease, promote healthy choices and well-being, and respond in case of an emergency. We are honored to serve our community. Thank you.
That's a great presentation.
Thank you.
I think we should pull some of these pictures and put it in our next Marion County today. I think it's great that you have photos, I don't know what their first one was, but from the 40s, it looks like.
Thirty, was it 35? It was 31, 37?
Well, the picture, 1937.
Yeah. It looks like it's the Franklin Building. Is that on High Street?
Yes, yeah.
So it's the Franklin Building. That's what it is. Yeah, still there.
What's it being used for now?
Uh, there's a bank in the bottom. Is it Willamette Bank? Yeah.
Is it the one over here?
Yeah, right.
Willamette Valley Bank.
Yeah, it's across the street from the courthouse.
Yeah.
The district attorney used to be there. He's never been there in one year.
Is this the, is this the parade you were talking about?
Yeah, on the right, there's a gentleman dressed like a cucumber.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and there's a pumpkin.
Glass of milk. I think someone's a beet.
An apple, uh, an apple, pineapple?
It's from the community of Brooks.
Brooks School, number 31.
There's also the Herald of Health from Woodburn.
Yeah, 1920, 1927. Herald of Health, Woodburn. Wow, this is cool.
Thank you, yeah. We have a lot of neat information and photos, so glad to have a chance to share it.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, and as a former restaurateur with restaurants in Marion County, I appreciated the health inspections that I always got, except one.
Very good, we appreciate them too.
Yeah, that's a long story, I won't go into it today.
That's fair, thanks. Would you like to make a motion?
I would.
And then begin the proclamation?
I would. We have some proclamations we're gonna present here in a little bit, too.
Oh, yes, I suppose I should sign them.
Madam Chair, I will move that we approve a proclamation designated in the week of April 7th through, April 7th through the 13th of 2025 as National Public Health Week in Marion County.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
All right, and I will read that motion, if you'd like me to.
Yes, please.
In a matter of proclaiming the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week in Marion County. Proclamation, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regular scheduled public meeting on April 2nd, 2025. Whereas communities around the nation observed the first full week of April as National Public Health Week, and whereas Marion County's theme for National Public Health Week in 2025 is rooted in history, growing in health, and whereas Marion County is committed to building a healthier community where all residents have the opportunity to live fulfilling and meaningful lives, and whereas the early childhood nursing program and WIC support families through regular assessments and education on pregnancy, parenting, nutrition, safety, and child development, and...
Whereas the Communicable Disease Program and the Public Health Clinic safeguard against the spread of disease in the community and provide testing and immunizations, and whereas emergency preparedness ensures residents are prepared to prevent, respond, and recover from emergencies or serious incidents, and whereas the Environmental Health Program enforces health and safety regulations and keeps our drinking water safe, and whereas the Health Promotion and Prevention Program engages and empowers communities to choose healthy behaviors, prevent chronic disease, and promote health and wellness, and whereas Marion County Health and Human Services continues to promote the health and well-being of county residents. Now therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, is National Public Health Week in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, the second day of April, 2025. Did you come prepared for a photo?
I did.
Good.
All right.
Oh, look at you, just in time for pictures.
I was just trying to put it. I was just trying to put it up there.
Come on, Ryan.
Where's Ryan?
Here, come on.
I know, all of you should come forward with the pictures.
Stay away from me.
You weren't here. Oh.
Oh, there's one too.
Well, we can fix it, you weren't here, so you didn't have to print it.
Did you print it?
They always bring one.
Print the call.
Yes, but we can fix it, have you sign it. All right, tell us where to look.
You can look at John.
Actually, give me a second.
I don't wanna look at John.
The camera said I need to reformat it.
Okay, okay, we'll go with that.
All right, ready? One, two, three. We'll do one more. One, two, three. Thank you. Are you ready now?
The camera's ready now. I was ready all. Three, two, one.
Do you wanna come over here? Okay. Thank you, great job, that's a great presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, you're worth it.
Thank you.
We're gonna trade you out, side proclamations, because calm's here.
Oh, that wasn't mine? I'm teasing.
What'd you like?
I didn't see a picture of them inspecting one of my restaurants. I was, I was first class.
I didn't want to make that picture. I didn't realize.
Why is it not insured for what happens?
Yeah, actually, we were gonna get to work with, except one.
Can you sign this one really quick, Ash, please?
Oh.
Thank you very much.
It's okay.
You're okay?
Thank you, congratulations.
I think he ran off, so he didn't have to read the consent agenda.
Well, Madam Chair, I would move to suspend the rules and allow Commissioner Willis to vote on the proclamation.
How about I?
Wonderful, thank you. Would you like to read the consent calendar?
Yep.
Thanks.
Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda under Board of Commissioners. Mental Health Advisory Committee, approve orders appointing Jackie Follis as Chair. Christine McCollum as Vice Chair of the Marion County Mental Health Advisory Committee with an ending term date of December 31st, 2027 for Ms. Follis, and ending term date of June 30th, 2028 for Ms. McCollum. Board appointment in Electoral Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee, approve an order appointing Rebecca Hills to Marion County Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Advisory Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2028. Under Business Services, approve Amendment Number One to the amended and restated lease agreement with Paul Bryant to add $155,449.32 for a new agreement total of $231,564.12 to continue to provide respite housing for Marion County Health and Human Services through March 31st, 2027. And approve an invoice with Brown and Brown Insurance Services Incorporated, the amount of $511,510 for the renewal of an excess general liability insurance policy with Obsidian Specialty Insurance Company, retroactive to March 1st, 2025 through March 1st, 2026. Under Finance, approve a quick claim deed to transfer ownership of tax foreclosed property for tax accounts 587742 and 587743 from Marion County to Sammy Sheriff Fee, the land sale contract.
I will second the motion.
A motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. All right, Carol, our first item under action is to consider an appointment to the LEDPC.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
For the record, Carol Hurd with Marion County Health and Human Services, and I'll just move closer.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to wanna move up. All right. I am here today seeking support for the appointment of Melinda Hills to the Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2028. Melinda is, Melinda's experience includes work on the Neonatal Opioid Withdrawal Syndrome Collaborative, or the NOWS Collaborative, which she joined in 2017 as a patient advocate. She is in recovery herself, a member of this community, and a clinical supervisor at Bridgeway Community Health Detox, where she continues to support individuals on their path to recovery. As you know, the LEDPC is an advisory group to the Marion County Local Health Authority and Marion County Health and Human Services Administrator, which identifies needs and priorities for alcohol and drug prevention and treatment services that best suit the needs and priorities of the community. Melinda is passionate about supporting this population and sees her involvement on the committee as an opportunity to contribute to the community that supported her. Her dedication and experience would make a strong and valuable addition to the committee, and Melinda is here today to tell you a little bit about herself.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
For the record, please introduce yourself.
My name is Melinda Hills. I am the clinical supervisor for Bridgeway Detox. I've worked at Bridgeway for four years now. I've been a counselor for six. I have nine years of recovery. One reason I wanted to become a counselor is because I wanted to help give back to the field that saved my life, and so I love to give back. I love to give back to the community. This would be another opportunity for me to do that.
Well, it's nice to meet you. Congratulations on your recovery.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you do in our community.
Thank you.
Super important. You have any questions or additions, Commissioners?
Madam Chair, thank you. Just appreciate you serving and giving back like this. It's just always a great thing to see, community members that have received services to give back and it'll make a difference in somebody else's life, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Commissioner Cameron, I'll take a motion.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order appointing Melinda Hills to the Marion County Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee with a term ending December 31st, 2028.
I second a motion.
A motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming along.
Thank you.
There is some awesome sound effects today.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We just have background music going. It was perfect timing, too. All right, we're gonna move on to item number nine, under Public Works. Somebody is looking for whoever is being hanged. Oh, call your daughter. I'm just kidding. Consider the adoption of an administrative ordinance approving zone change comprehensive plan change case number 24003. Johnny Davidson is referenced in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. John.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, how are you?
Very good, how are you guys doing?
Well, thank you.
John Speckman, Public Works. So this morning, I am coming to ask you to consider adoption of the administrative ordinance approving zone change comprehensive plan change 24003 for Johnny C. Davidson. This is a zone change from EFU to AR-10.
Oh, microphone, John, sorry.
Oh, it's enough.
I guess.
Oh. There we go. Yeah, that's much love.
I know, would you please start over?
Start over? Of course. This is John Speckman with Marion County Planning. I'm here before you today to ask you to consider adoption of the administrative ordinance approving zone change comprehensive plan change, ZCCP 24003, for Johnny C. Davidson. This is a zone change from EFU to AR-10, comp plan change from primary agriculture to rural residential. The Marion County Hearings Officer held a duly notice public hearing on November 4th, 2024, and issued a recommendation on January 13th, 2025, to approve zone change comprehensive plan change, 24003. The Board held a duly notice public hearing on the application on February 19th, 2025, considered all the evidence in the record, and approved the request. The ordinance and findings have been prepared, and notice of adoption was given on March 19th, 2025. The administrative ordinance is now set for a formal adoption. Staff recommends approval of the administrative ordinance approving the zone change comprehensive plan change, ZCCP 24003, Johnny C. Davidson, but other motion options for consideration are, one, to direct staff to make changes and approve a modified ordinance, or two, to not approve the ordinance. And I will stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, I have one. John, what does it cost the landowner to go through this process? So if we approve this, then there's a board order and they'll be able to move forward with what they wanna do, but just, just the land use process, like, what do the fees look like? What's, what's the timeline look like? Help me understand what, what the land owner is going through.
On our end, the application fee was $6,010.
Okay.
And that's for a zone change, comprehensive plan change, with a goal exception, because there was a goal exception to Goal Three for agriculture for this one.
Yeah.
The applicant did hire a land use attorney to help them with this process. I do not know what that cost, but surely not cheap.
And then what about the, like, the hearing? So the $6,010, does that include the hearing?
Yes.
Not the lawyer, but the, the hearing officer's time and everything?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and then how, how is that fee assessed? Is it incrementally? Is it sort of like you submit an application fee and then there's other fees as it goes along, or how does that work?
Not for us. For planning, it's, it's set fees.
It's just one fee.
There is a slight variable, if you were to do a zone change on a large property, it's the $6,010 plus $70 per acre.
Okay.
On something like this, where it's a two-acre parcel, we're not adding that on. But if someone was to say come in for a 100-acre zone change, that would add on, you know, another...
Thank you, that's helpful.
Of course.
Just questions that you haven't thought of asking until you're sitting in board session.
Right on.
Thanks, John.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Cameron?
No, but just, just to comment on Commissioner Willis's thoughts there, one of the reasons things cost so much money to do, housing or whatever, in our state and in our communities, because we have these kinds of costs. Think about that, you just added that on to two acres, plus the attorney's time. We know that they're really cheap, right? Legal counsel, right? So, yeah, it's just really a good example of how expensive it is to, to make changes to develop property, so.
Right, and a relatively small change, right? Like, what they're gonna be able to do with an AR-10 parcel is not a lot. Like, nobody's building apartment buildings here, or a subdivision, or a, right? So this is a very lim, I think that's what I'm intrigued by, is this is not substantially changing the use of this piece of property, but it's obviously big. How long did this process take from when they submitted the application?
Well, the application was submitted July 24th of 2024, so it, it, you know, took about 10 months to get through.
Thank you.
Did you want to add something, Steve?
As someone who previously handled these types of matters, I would guess that all in cost was probably 15 to 20 grand, and they probably were working on it for at least two to three months before submitting the application, so you're probably looking at a full year, and 15 to 20 grand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Then I would appreciate it if you would make a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we adopt administrative ordinance approving zone change comprehensive plan, ZCCP change case number 24-003, Johnny C. Davidson, as referenced in Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
I'll second the motion.
A motion in a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes.
Any questions?
All right, not Brian May. We're gonna consider approval on Amendment Number Three to the contract for services with River City Environmental, Inc.
Andrew.
Mm-hmm, good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I don't know. Is the light on?
No, it's on.
Great.
Morning, Commissioners, for the record, Andrew Johnson, Public Works. We're here today to do an amendment with River City Environmental. River City Environmental is the entity that hauls our leachate from our ash monofil up at Woodburn. Historically, they've hauled the bulk of this material to facilities in the Portland metro area, but due to increased, increasing regulatory restrictions, those disposal locations are either no longer able to accept the leachate, or they've severely restricted how much can go in. What this, what this amendment will do is allow us to haul to another alternative disposal location that can accept what we need to haul. We historically generate between 2 and 4 million gallons annually, and due to those restrictions we have, our lagoon balances have been increasing over several years. This has led to our lagoon inventory increasing, and this amendment will allow for the hauling disposal to this new facility at a rate that will allow us to reduce that lagoon balance. This amendment will also add $1 million to the total contract spend.
Any questions? Commissioner Cameron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. How'd you know I was gonna ask a question about this? Andrew, I know we have a cell that's still open, right?
Correct.
And that, and that contributes heavily to...
Correct.
...this amount, and what's the, what's the schedule to potentially close down that cell?
So we're in the process now of developing a, getting an engineer to redesign it, because we have to change our, because we're not gonna complete the designed capacity of that, so we have to redesign it, get that approved from DEQ. Soon as that happens, we'll put it out to bid to get that closed, so we're hoping within the next 18 months to two years.
Takes that long to...
Yeah.
...go through the design and approval process to shut it down?
Yeah.
All right, and this contract extends us through '26, so it gives us the time...
The, the current contract goes through '26. We do have an option to extend that contract further, but the monetary ask only gets us enough to make sure what we're planning on hauling for the next year, and so we will either be coming back to extend this contract or put it out for solicitation again, so.
Okay. Ready?
Ready.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number Three to the contract for services with River City Environmental, Inc., to add $1 million for a new contract total of $4,750,000 for the hauling and disposal of leachate to a broader range of Department of Environmental Quality-approved facilities that can accommodate the county's disposal needs through June 30th, 2026.
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Andrew, nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
All right, Ryan and Carl, gonna come forward to discuss Amendment Number One to the ODOT intergovernmental agreement to add county funds in the amount of, well, you can tell us about it.
Good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Works Capital Projects Manager.
It's like you questioned yourself for just a second there.
I was debating on how to say it.
And Carl Lund, Public Works.
Good morning. Funny.
All right, so I will let Carl kind of describe Amendment One and what we're going to do. He'll mention it, but I wanna also say we've been really appreciative of ODOT through this process in making sure we get the best project we can in what they're building.
Great.
So Amendment One is to install a roundabout at the intersection of Wiltsey and Battle Creek.
So I will let Carl kind of describe Amendment One and what we're going to do. He'll mention it, but I want to also say we've been really appreciative of ODOT through this process and making sure we get the best project we can in what they're building.
Great.
So Amendment One is to install a roundabout at the intersection of Wiltsey and Battle Creek. The Kubler-Delany High Five widening project is there-- one of the things that they're doing is they are straightening the bridge across the interstate on Battle Creek, which changes the location of the Wiltsey-Battle Creek intersection. One of the things that they did is it reduced the sightlines on Wiltsey and made it more difficult to see the intersection for approaching vehicles. And the design, because of financial constraints of the project, initially only had a always stop at this location. The ODOT and the project manager were able to change order in a roundabout if we would contribute $557,203. This is a fairly unheard-of thing in the current funding environment, and we're thankful.
Wiltsey is the road east of High Five on Kubler, is that right?
Correct. It's south of Kubler.
Like, where the... It's south of Kubler?
Correct.
Yes, it goes-- it drives south. Like, if you go...
At this point, it's an east-west road that connects into Battle Creek, which is going southeast.
Okay. Interesting. I'm really trying to visualize this roundabout location, but you know what? I'll drive it later and see how it goes.
There's a-- Madam Chair, there is a map in our-- shows what the design looks like under Exhibit A, what it looks like currently today, and then what the design looks like. And they're actually moving the bridge-- it looks like they're moving the bridge a little further north on High Five.
A little to the north, yeah.
To make it go straight across.
Yep.
And what you see in your packet is a preliminary design. If we do approve this amendment, the consultant, David Evans and Associates, who's also doing the design of our roundabouts, we're working on, would put together its final design and really work through that.
And it's a roundabout that really only has two or three-- it only has three entrances and exits, if I'm looking at that right.
Correct. It's a three-legged roundabout.
It's a three-legged roundabout.
Yep.
I bet you it goes lump, ba-dum, ba-dum, lump. Never mind.
You said that with such confidence and familiarity.
I just love when Ryan comes and shows us pictures like this.
Carl's like, "Come on, that's a three-legged roundabout. Don't you know about this?"
Were you going to show those pictures, or are I just jumping ahead?
We actually were not, because this isn't-- no slideshow.
I've got it on my computer, so.
We look forward to seeing it. Is there anything else, Commissioners, you'd like to add to this discussion? If not, I would love a motion, Commissioner Willis.
She's learned a new term, three-legged roundabout.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add county funds in the amount of $557,203 to initiate roundabout design for the Interstate Five Kubler Boulevard to Delany Road widening project through August 26th, 2041. Tell me it's not going to take till 2041.
The estimated timeline is six years, so it would be till 2031, I believe, the...
So I want to say, ODOT tends to just throw an end date way out for these IGAs. I believe this IGA also includes basically us committing to maintain the improvements they're building, which we would do anyways on our own roadways, but they have end dates for the IGAs that are far beyond when construction would actually end.
Well, tell them, I think that's ridiculous.
Well, household 2017, sir, is a primary example of ridiculous. Come on, man. They haven't done anything out of that whole project slate, which is why you have it for 20 years. Either way, are you okay with that?
I'm okay. No, I'm not okay with it, but I made the motion.
Do you accept it, I suppose, is the question?
Whatever.
Did you make the motion?
You did.
All right, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those-- the motion passes. I don't want to talk about it anymore.
I'm going to vote for it.
Yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're going to do Sheriff's Office. Lieutenant Jefferson is going to come forward and talk to us about a contract with Pathfinder Network.
Hi, good morning, everyone. For the record, my name is Anna Jefferson, and I'm a lieutenant with Marion County Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections Division. So I'm here today to seek approval for the contract for services with the Pathfinder Network. So in preparation for the reopening of the stabilization center, the Sheriff's Office temporarily closed the transition center. And that closure impacted several programs and services that were funded through the justice reinvestment, and that included deputy positions, materials and services, and community-based support. So with these services passed, the local Public Safety Coordinating Council approved reallocating the unspent justice and reinvestment funds to support a new stabilization mentor program. To implement this initiative, the Sheriff's Office issued a request for proposals from January 9th through January 23rd, seeking a provider to offer mentorship, resource, and referral supports, cognitive behavioral programming, peer support, and other related services. The Pathfinder Network submitted a proposal that met the program's needs and was selected as a service provider. This contract is for $206,813 and will expire December 31st, 2025.
Thank you. Can you, if you're comfortable, just talk a little bit about the positions that this contract is going to cover and describe a little bit of what their work will be?
Yes. So it's expanding a program we already have with Pathfinder Network and its mentors, and they provide direct services to our clients, not only at the locations, or it would be at the stabilization center, but also in-- they currently are in our building at PSB. These mentors, they're really exceptional. They have lived experience, and they are so passionate about working with our clients. And that's something that's just really, really important to us, as someone that's-- they kind of meet them where they're at, and they, I mean, they always go above and beyond. And so, personally, I'm really excited to work with them and have them expand their services so they can help more of our clients.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Cameron?
I'm ready.
Okay, I'm ready.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve contract for services with the Pathfinder Network in the amount of $206,813 to provide coordination of legal, medical, educational, and employment support resources to Marion County Sheriff's Office clients through December 31st, 2025.
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Commander Bernard and Sergeant Deschawn can come forward and talk to us about an agreement with the City of Salem and the City of Kaiser Police Departments for automated license plate reader camera system.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Sorry for the cell phone debacle earlier.
No worries.
For the record, my name is Jason Bernards. I'm the Enforcement Division Commander for the Sheriff's Office.
And I'm Andrew Deschawn. I'm the Detective Sergeant for the Sheriff's Office.
And today, we're going to be talking about the automatic license plate reader IGA between the Sheriff's Office, or, excuse me, Marion County, the City of Salem, and the City of Kaiser. So in this IGA, we'll be working collaboratively with the City of Salem Police Department, as well as the City of Kaiser Police Department, on the automatic license plate reader camera program. Salem, right now, will be the seat of that program. They have the server already where all of this data is going to go into. The-- involved in this IGA is a not-to-exceed $10,000 for Marion County. What that amount is there for is if that server, for some reason, doesn't work or it breaks, we share a percentage of the responsibility for that server, is what this is saying. As the board well knows, this is a huge investigative tool for our folks. That's why I brought Sergeant Deschawn. He can speak to some real-world applications of that system. It's going to be a huge benefit for us.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you guys want to hear some examples?
Yeah. I mean, you are here for a reason, so you should use the microphone.
It's really an invaluable tool. It's already up in Salem and Kaiser. Kaiser just installed, I believe, around 40 cameras.
Wow.
And so, I might be off on that number a little bit, but total right now, I think, between Salem and Kaiser, there's about 65 cameras out there already. And so, pretty much every investigation that we get into, it turns into where did these vehicles go, develop suspects. It's just an invaluable tool. Last year, we had several shootings all around the Four Corners area. I think there was two or three in a row that we were able to-- a shooting happened, we got on the LPRs, as we call them, license plate readers, and find those suspects within a day. And so, it's a pretty invaluable tool for really any types of investigations, but what we're really hopeful and excited for is the conviolence and all the major stuff that's happening in our community.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No. Go stop people from shooting people.
Right. Yes. Please. Well...
Well, you know, within the last-- within my memory cycle, which is about a week right now, you all intercepted an individual, I think in East Salem, and a pursuit began and then stopped, and then Salem PD interacted and was able to detain them within a matter of, I think, hours.
Yes.
Would this system help reduce the time of something like that to occur? Because I'm sure what happened was the deputies that were in pursuit radioed in the chatter amongst law enforcement that was out right at the streets, was looking for this particular suspect. But this technology, in theory, would be able to probably ping where that deputy originally was, where the pursuit began, and then follow the car.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, it reduces the high-stress liabilities of pursuits and stuff. If we can just go find that car, find that suspect, and not have to engage in a pursuit or some type of use-of-force incident, hopefully that's the goal, right?
Right.
Is to find them, catch them off guard, and absolutely, you can set up alerts, so if we know the license plate and it pings in any of our cameras, it'll tell us where it's going through, so we can mobilize units in that area, hopefully, and things peacefully.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the work that you all did, you've been doing lately. There's been a lot going on in the community with crime, and I know that it's a very stressful environment, but the Sheriff's Office is doing a good job of engaging and bringing people to accountability, which is important. And I'm glad that we can add one more tool to your arsenal and hopefully prevent the legislature-- let's not give them the ideas, but from taking anything else away. I think the motion is yours.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Salem Police Department and the City of Kaiser Police Department in the amount of $10,000 to establish the inter-agency automated license plate reader, Alper, camera system program through March 31st, 2027.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now reassess the Board of Commissioners convene as a contract review board, and it doesn't-- I don't know. Is anybody coming forward? Oh, contract review, because I don't know what that means, Brenda, because we've never done it before.
You don't have to have it on actions like a consent item under that board.
I'm sorry, Steve. Give me some direction here, because there's no information on this, and we've never done this before. So are we just reading it and then voting on it?
You can do that. It's just scheduling a hearing, and then the hearing will allow for public comment and whatnot.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron, would you please?
Yeah. Madam Chair, under the contract review board, I will make a motion to approve an order to set a public hearing date for April 23rd, 2025, to receive testimony and consider granting an exemption to allow an alternative competitive process pursuant to Marion County public rules for the Canyon Alert Project.
Madam Chair, I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I have some concerns about this.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing...
I have concerns.
All right. Thank you for noting that on the record. All those in favor, please...
Madam Chair, what are those concerns?
Well, I...
About me?
I have some concerns about the processes being proposed here. It's the same process that the Public Works team has used for the radio project, and I feel like there's been a lack of accountability in that project. And so, I'm concerned about using the same process that has led to some problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Aye.
Yes, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I abstain.
The motion passes. Thank you. I'm going to adjourn as a contract review board and reconvene as a Board of Commissioners. We don't have anything else on the agenda. I would like to invite everybody to attend Friday's Child Abuse Awareness Month Parade. It begins-- lineup begins at 7:45 on Friday at the State Fairgrounds. We will like travel through Salem and end at the Salem Police Department, where there'll be some speakers from 9:00 to 10:00. And if you come, find some blue ribbons to wear on your person, and then if you would, wear those blue ribbons through the month of April, so people can inquire as to why you were wearing a blue ribbon. The blue ribbon stands for your intention to lean in to reduce and prevent child abuse across this county. And I hope it's a very big parade. Do you have anything to add today, Commissioner, other than maybe we should sing you happy birthday?
No, it's gone.
I mean, it was yesterday.
Mm-hmm. I'll second that motion.
Ah!
Sheriff, I think you got to come up to the microphone.
The sheriff wants to sing you happy birthday.
And you have to lead the singing.
Happy birthday. Oh, here he comes.
Yeah!
It takes two commissioners to make any decision in the county, so you should be fine.
All right. For the record, my name's Nick Hunter. I am the Marion County Sheriff, and I'm here to make a, I guess, a motion that we sing Commissioner Cameron happy birthday.
I think you should just start.
Well, I'm happy to, but I'm wondering if we could do it as more of a medley, and so if I can have Commander Bernard come up here.
Absolutely, absolutely, Commander Bernard. There is a microphone here.
Are you legally obligated to do that?
A medley does not work with a single chorus of people.
Can we-- you know who loves to sing, Sheriff? This guy right here. I bet he would start it off.
That's true. No, but I-- there's just something so spectacular about the sheriff leading happy birthday, so...
Just count it down.
I'm going to follow your lead.
So, Madam Chair, our business is officially done. I think I'm going to walk out.
Absolutely. Absolutely not the chair.
So, one, two, and three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Commissioner Cameron. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Well done, Sheriff.
My work is done here.
And we're adjourned. Have a great day.